Good morning, everyone. We're just a minute or two past, but if you rise if you're able and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Welcome to this town hall. I'm Tom Foster, President of the 2025 Board of Directors. This meeting is audio and video recorded by the RCSC management and staff and is also being livestreamed. Please take out your cell phones and electronic devices and check them to ensure they're all on a silent mode. Again, we do not tolerate verbal or physical abuse towards any member, guest, visitor, or employee, violators maybe asked to leave the meeting. We'd normally introduce folks here, but I think I'll reserve most of that for Mr. Kies, but this is Director Brissette who will act as the timekeeper here. Board Coordinator Marcia Johnson is at the end over here. Next to her is Director of Operations Mike Dearmeyer, who will be working to watch the livestream for any comments that come in there. Let me recognize Alan Kleinhans and Carly Young and Miguel Jackson, who are the audiovisual engineers. And of course, thank the Sundial staff who set up the meeting for us. So the purpose of this town hall is to give you, the members, an opportunity to give some inputs to the board and to the Bylaw Working Group on the proposed Bylaw Revisions. Secretary Kies will give a presentation on the revisions that are being proposed. And after his presentation, members will be allowed to make comments. And we had initially thought this would be a much fuller room, so we thought it would be two minutes, but given the turnout, we've changed that back to three. We will call numbers from the back of the room there. So please take a number from that dispenser back there when you come up to speak, in addition to your name and member number. If you would give the article, the line number of the section that you're speaking to, that would be helpful for us to be able to track your comments. We will document those comments and take them back to the Bylaw Working Group for consideration. Please don't take multiple numbers in a row. Take one, and if you wish to speak more than once, after speaking, take another number to give everyone else an opportunity to speak who wishes to do so. We have to end this session at 1:30 because we have to get this room ready for another engagement or event later today. However, if you don't get an opportunity to speak this morning, we do have a second town hall on Wednesday evening, October 22, at 5:00 p.m. right here. So at this point, let me just turn it over to Secretary Kies, and he will lead us with his presentation, and then we'll get into the comment session of today's program.
Can you bring up the slides, Alan? Great, thank you. Good morning. I'm Preston Kies. I was the Chair of the Bylaws Working Group. We've been working on these for the last seven months now. I want to thank the people on the group because they've put in hundreds and hundreds of hours, really dedicated to trying to improve the bylaws and their dedication and spirit in trying to make things better for us. It's just been impressive to watch. So what are we going to talk about today? Let me do this. I'm kind of like Vice President Nedde Simon. I work better when I'm walking around. We're going to talk about revising the bylaws. Why do we do this? We're going to talk about, and my wife always says that, you know, my hands move around, so I hope that's not distracting to you, but it's part of the way I work. Why do we revise the bylaws? Then we're going to talk about the Bylaws Working Group, our processes, how we went about getting the changes, the recommendations made. We're going to talk about the major recommended changes by article. I'm not going to go through them all because if you've read them, there are hundreds and hundreds of them, and if I had that, we'd be here till tomorrow, and you'd never have a chance to ask questions. After that, we'll proceed into the motions that were made from the membership meeting that were not done. We're going to go into a slide about where do we go from there, and then we'll open up the floor to your questions. So why do we revise the bylaws? Many of you remember the annual membership meeting in March this year. Nobody was happy about it. You weren't happy about it. The board wasn't happy about it, and there were a lot of good reasons for that. There weren't any motions. We had 12 motions that members had forwarded for consideration for the meeting, but none of them were moved forward. Some of them were conflicting with each other. Some of them were not ready. They weren't prefaced well. There was a lot of things that could have been done. One of them was so long that it's not something you could decide at a member meeting. So you were dissatisfied, we were dissatisfied. So the board decided, well, what we need to do is sit down, take a group of people, go through them line by line, look at all the motions that people made, and come with something that we hope is an improvement over what we have right now. The first thing the working group found out is that there are key areas of our bylaws that haven't kept up with changes to the Arizona Nonprofit Corporation Act. And I'm just going to refer to that as the ANCA from now on, because if I keep trying to say it, I'm going to stumble over it all the time. And so to do that, we had to engage a bylaws and a nonprofit corporation attorney, and she was extremely helpful to make sure that the things that we made are in line with what the articles of incorporation say and what the ANCA says. And frankly, there were a number of areas that she came back with that the board was very surprised about, and I'm sure you are too. So we started out by asking for people to become members of the Bylaws Working Group. We had 16 people that volunteered to join it. Three of them were people that made motions, and we decided not to do that because the perception of having people that make motions deciding on the motions, it just wasn't a good look. So we didn't think that was a good idea. So from that, we sent out resumes of people. We got the resumes back. Nine people were selected. Unfortunately, due to different reasons, three of them dropped out. And the fourth one, the last one on the bottom you can see, is Ray Chorinenki. Ray is a lawyer and a Roberts Rules parliamentarian. She joined us at different times, but she did not have a vote in it. So the other people were the ones that had a vote in it. So how do we work? The first thing we did as a group is we reviewed all the motions from the membership meeting. Then we requested the motion makers to come down, sit down, and talk with the Bylaws Working Group and give us their thoughts on why they thought their motions were important. Then we took our group, divided it into four different subgroups. One of them was looked at the definitions in Articles 1 through 3. Another group looked at Article 4, and if you've looked at Article 4 and the recommended changes to it, there are a lot of things that need to be done. So this group keyed on that, and they were really busy, and one of the last groups to finish their work. The third group was Articles 5 through 8, and the last group was Articles 9 through 13. And then we again took the member motions, assigned them to all the subgroups so they could be looked at again. So we started this in early April. We started getting the group together. Initially, we met every two weeks, which gave the subgroups time in between full group meetings to be able to work on their articles, look at the motions, and try to figure out what is the best way to change them or if changes needed to be made. If they didn't need to be made, that was just fine. Most of the changes in the group were by general consensus. I'd look around, talk to people, and if we were in agreement, we'd go forward. If there was a contentious area, and there were a number of them, then we decided by majority vote. After that, article by article, we sent the revisions off, sent them to the Bylaws Working Attorney. She came back with her inputs and helped make changes to make sure that we are in line with the incorporation act. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Rusty, and Rusty is going to talk about the definitions and Articles 1 through 3.
Do you want to hold this or put it on the stand? Okay. Thank you. Okay, for anybody who doesn't know me, I'm Rusty Bradshaw. And we looked at the definitions that were in the old bylaws. We made some changes, starting off with the business affairs of the corporation and the ANCA. And we took input on this from the lawyer who was helping us. RCSC cannot violate its corporate documents or ANCA statutes that are in effect at the We added that an owner's name must be on the deed for the property. We also defined an unqualified owner as an owner that can't meet member qualifications. We defined a non-owner as a renter, tenant, lessie, occupant, and lifetime use. Next slide. Okay, the Article 1 changes were pretty much self-explanatory. We were going to do some special rules of order. We revised the parliamentary authority precedence. Number 1 would be Arizona laws and the corporate documents. Number 2 would be RCSC bylaws. Number 3 would be those special rules. And number 4 would be Roberts Rules of Order. The fiscal year was defined to be for financial reporting and budgeting only. That allows for business to continue year to year. In other words, if in December's meeting there is a motion for its first reading, that would continue over to January instead of having to rush things to get done by December 31st. Okay. We removed the 75-mile rule. It was the consensus of the group that those owners within that 75 miles who did not live in Sun City were paying the assessment, the PIF, the CIF, just like the rest of us. So we removed that rule, but those owners still had to comply with the qualifications to be a member to get a rec. card. In addition, we said that the property must be on the tax rolls as not a rental or non-resident. We also added some language that said if the owner rents out the property and renters want privilege cards, the owner's rec. card would be deactivated. Okay, we also looked at the incident reports, and we determined what would be reported as medical and incident reports. Medical reports would be for illness, loss of consciousness, injuries, et cetera. Incident reports would be for poor behavior. The club conduct report was not changed and is detailed in Board Policy 12. Next slide. And Article 3 was left pretty much as it was with no significant changes.
Is it possible to get a copy of the...
The slides?
Yes.
Can you hold all questions at the end, but the answer is yes? But right now, no.
Are they available here?
I'm sorry, they're not. I was a little remiss earlier. I should have introduced the people that were on the working group that are here today. Next to Marcia is Director Gray, who was on the working group. Director Ruff was. I'm going to get it right this time. Carmo Sharon Brock.
Yes!
It took me a long time to get that right. Was on the group. Rusty, of course, was. You've met him. And then Dave Wieland was there. We have a couple of members that weren't here because they had other obligations. Jennifer Anderson and Scott Bortness. And then Vice President Nedde Simon was also in the working group. She's somewhere in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean right now on a cruise. So let's move to Article 4. There's a lot of changes in Article 4. There were a lot of changes needed to the membership meeting because none of us were happy with what happened last time. What we tried to do, and what the group tried to do for a lot of this, is to try to increase member input, try to increase member activity, because if you've gone to a membership meeting for most of the years, we don't even meet a quorum. So we're trying to find ways to increase member activity, get more members involved. So we have a quorum in most meetings, and we don't go years without having a quorum. So we changed a lot of things on the motion process, and there was a lot of discussion on this. We also didn't like that the only thing that happens at a membership meeting annually is we go through the motions. That just didn't make any sense to us. You, as members, have a need to know what's going on with the corporation. So we included things to put in, okay, one of the things that needs to be talked about, the previous year accomplishments and the previous year challenges. You know, if there were challenges left over, that needs to be part of the annual membership meeting. You also need to know what the state is of RCSC finances. That should be at a membership meeting. And you need to know what our goals are as a corporation that we're going to work on through the next year. And then, of course, you still have to know the results of member or board-proposed motions. But we want to make the membership meeting more meaningful and more information for the members that attend, so you have that information for you. As Rusty said, we also revised the parliamentary authority for this. I know it's a repeat from what's in earlier, but we thought it was important enough to be kept in here. One of the things we also did is we added that the membership meeting has to be done in March. It was a recommendation from a member. We thought it was a great idea. Going out with Article 4. This is one of the areas that surprised us. Another one that surprised us also was if you look at the beginning, there's a paragraph about that long in the definitions about business affairs of the corporation. It's long and involved, and it came from the lawyer, which comes from the statutes, and we were really surprised at all the things that are in there. Another thing that surprised us was it talked about how do the conflict between what the members want in motions and what the board wants. And again, we went to the bylaws attorney on this. So the paragraph now reads, "In the event of a conflict concerning the bylaws between the members and the board, the action of the members will prevail," which is what it says now. However, the statutes have changed, and so it's only to the extent that the conflict concerns a proper member subject. So the question would be, what's a proper member subject? According to what we got from the attorney, proper member subjects include provisions that directly govern member rights, privileges, and qualifications. So what you can do. Member participation in corporate governance. You can talk about how we do things. You can't make motions that says you will, you know, build a master plan, you will renovate a recreation center. Those are under the business affairs of the corporation. But how we decide that, that's things that is a proper member subject. And any member that must be approved by the members under these bylaws, Articles of the Corporation, and the ANCA. Now that goes also into, okay, if it's not a proper member subject, you got a motion, what happens to it? Well, it's still a motion. It still needs to be heard. It still needs to be considered. So those become non-binding recommendations for things that do conflict with the articles of the ANCA or things that intrude on the powers that govern the management of the business affairs or operational government because the ANCA won't allow that. So moving on with Article 4. The first thing we talked about in there is how we're going to amend the Articles of incorporation, because they're stated in the Articles of incorporation, but we thought this is another thing that was worthwhile to repeat here. Amendments to the Articles of incorporation can be by petition of the members who are 10% of the total membership or by a majority vote of the Board of Directors. As far as making amendments to them, of course, then they have to go to the membership meeting, and the membership meeting has to pass them. The current bylaws don't have a process for a motion maker to improve their motions. The way it works at a membership meeting is the motion goes in, it goes to the group there, you get time to talk about it, maybe make an amendment, but you have very limited time to make an impact on it. Or if there are suggestions that you have as a person that maybe make the motion better, improve it for a corporation, there really is limited time at a membership meeting. And if we have 12 motions like we did this year, we'd have even less time. So we tried to figure out a process of how we can include or increase member input in the motions before they actually get voted on. So what we've done, what we were recommending, is the day after the annual membership meeting, all the way through the end of September, members have the ability to put motions forward. That gives them a six-month window if you want to put motions forward on how to amend the bylaws or the Articles of incorporation. Now, of course, we get into whether a motion is a proper member subject or not. So the first thing that happens when someone desires to make an amendment is it has to go to an attorney so the attorney can say, okay, where does this fit with the ANCA and the Articles of incorporation to make sure it's a proper member subject? However, even if it comes back from the attorney that it's not a proper member subject, the motion should still go forward, and it still needs to be considered by the members because that gives you input into it. And if it's something that ends up being a recommendation to the board, you still have the ability to see that. The motion maker still has whatever is important to them, go forward so that people can see So what we're going to do is when a motion is put forward by a member, after it gets done with the lawyers, we're going to put it on the RCSC website so you, as the members, can look at it. And if you have suggestions on how to amend it, how to change it, you can send those and give those to the motion maker. That gives you six months, depending on when the motion comes up. After the motion's closed at the end of September, two more months to make inputs on it so that you have a much longer window to be able to make changes or to make motions better. So after that happens, the motion maker owns the motion. If he or she says, no, I like it the way it is, I don't want to change it, that's fine. The motion belongs to the motion maker. So it will continue to go forward if the motion maker decides not to make changes. If he or she wants to make changes, there's time to do that before it goes up for a vote. So after we go through, end of September is when initial motions have to get done. We have two more months till the end of November to make refinements to them, changes if the motion maker wants to. Then, of course, because if there's changes to the motions, it needs to go back to the bylaws attorney. Is it proper or not? There could be something that was not a proper subject, ends up being one. It could have been one that wasn't a proper subject, now it is, but we need the bylaws attorney to work and look at that to make sure that we're in line with our documents. After that, if the end of December, the final motions that can be voted on will get posted on the website for people to vote with. Things that are not proper subjects will then get referred directly to the board as recommendations because that's how it works, how it should work. Starting in the middle of January, you've got six weeks as a member to vote on the motions, and this is how we're trying to open up and try to get more people involved. There are several ways that you can vote during that time. You can vote online. You can vote by proxy. You can vote in person. We're going to be inundating. The corporation is going to be sending all sorts of messages out. Vote. These are the motions. Go online if you need to. This also gives the election committee time if they want to have, you know, a voting booth, say at Bell Rec. Center or some other locations, so other people have a chance to get them. We're trying to get more people involved. It's one of the things we worked on the whole, the whole process. At the end of that, it goes to the election committee. The election committee tabulates the votes that were online because we have a separate service that'll tabulate all of the online votes, and that gives it to us so that we have a third party looking at all that. They'll put that together with all the votes that were done in person or by proxy or absentee ballot, put them all together, and then that has to pass by a two-thirds vote. This is another thing that surprised us. If you look at the bylaws now, it says at the annual membership meeting that the motion gets passed by a majority. The ANCA says that needs to be a two-thirds. And I can understand that because to change the bylaws or to change the Articles of incorporation, you should really have a higher bar than a simple majority. And so the ANCA says these things have to pass by two-thirds. Then we started looking at, from there, we started looking at quorums. Okay, so if we're going to be voting online, what is the best way to satisfy the quorum? The quorum stays at 500 people, just like it was previously. But what we want to do is take all the votes, all the different people that have voted, put their number together, and if that's over 500 people that have voted in that six-week period, that becomes our quorum. It makes it easier to get more people involved and to get more people at it instead of having to show up at the meeting. Sir?
You need to switch that?
No.
Yes, you think you're talking about are all...
I'm talking about the quorum, sir.
Yes, it is. Okay.
Thank you.
The whole list of everything is...
We'll get to that. Thank you. Yeah, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. For the special membership meeting, since there's a smaller window for that to take place, we wanted to keep the quorum satisfied the same way it is now. 500 people are going to have to show up at a special membership meeting, and 500 people or 500 people, including proxies, show up, and we'll vote that way. So yeah, I did get ahead of myself, didn't I, Jim? Yeah, sorry. So let's review. First day after the following annual meeting until September, motion makers get to put that in. They get referred to the lawyer to determine if it's a proper member subject. All amendments continue through the process. We post the amendments on the RCSC website for member input. You get time to talk with the motion maker, try and see if it's better, try and make a way to do it, but the motion maker still controls his or her motion. It's their motion. We added in that we can put in an ad hoc working group like we did this time. Those people could possibly also give inputs, make suggestions to the motion maker, but the motion maker can decide whether they stay or don't stay. After the last business day in November, it gets referred to council to make sure there's still proper subjects or not. Amendments posted to the end of December. We vote between mid-January through the end of February, and the votes are tabulated and the results are mentioned at the meeting. Thanks, Jim. So special membership meeting. A special membership meeting can be called two ways. A 10% of a petition of all of the members or by majority vote of the board. Our recommendations for a special membership meeting is that the only purpose of that meeting is the business that is at hand. If it's to change an amendment or if the special membership meeting is called to recall a director, something like that, those are the only things that take place at it, is that. Voting at the special membership meeting can be done in person, or you can have proxies for it. for it. Then we started looking at the proxy process. And the question is, we didn't, we weren't crazy about the proxy process because what it does right now is one person can give a proxy, get a proxy from up to 25 voters and that person holds those 25 votes in their hand and those 25 people have no idea necessarily what that person is going to be voting on for all of the different motions. I will guarantee you that whoever held the proxies for our annual membership meeting this time did not go through all 12 of those motions, talk with the people that they got the votes from to let them know how they felt on it. We didn't feel that was a good way to do business. If you want to give your vote away, that's fine, but you should know exactly what you're giving your vote away for. So we separated it out. So if you're going to do proxies, that's great. However, we want a proxy for each individual motion. So we, as a voter, when you give that away, you know exactly what that person's going to be voting for. And then after that vote is taken on that specific motion, that proxy expires. So if you want to get proxies from people and there's seven motions and you want their votes on it, then you have to have seven proxies. That way you make sure the people know exactly what their votes are going for. So, how to vote? You have to be a member in good standing to vote, whether it's online, in person, however it's done. For the annual meeting, as I said, the different ways you can do it are electronically, absentee, proxy, in paper, or paper, in person. And then for a special meeting, everything has to be done at the meeting. Let's move to Article Five. Article Five is all about the Board of Directors. A lot of times what we did in the bylaws is there were paragraphs that dealt with responsibilities and things like that. We moved a lot of this stuff into bullets because it seemed to be easier to read. Paragraphs, it's hard to sort things through. So length of terms for board members are still going to be three, two, and one years. Towards the six-year maximum, none of that changes. The greatest vote getter gets a three-year term unless that person is term limited. For an example, Steve Collins, if he was running for the board for this year, Steve's already been on the board for five years by votes. So Steve could run for the board again, but he's only eligible for a one-year term. So he couldn't get a three-year term. If there's a two-year or a one-year term, Steve would get whatever is less. And then the most people that got, that were eligible for three-year terms would end up getting three-year terms. It just made sense to us that way. Why give the most votes to a person who can only be there one year and then the board's got to go through two years of trying to find somebody to replace them? Didn't make a lot of sense to us. And then if there are vacancies on the board, whether it happens beforehand or after January 1st, the board either fills them from candidates they have that didn't get enough votes to get elected or the board is going to fill it by openings and asking people like we've done in the past. And that's going to be pertinent for this year coming up because we only have two people and we have a lot more, two people that want to be candidates and we have a lot more board So the question is, we talked about how members can do amendments to the bylaws, so we need to go into how the board can do it. Amendments to the bylaws can be submitted by the board at a board meeting. That has been the way it's been in the past and we're going to continue it that way. However, just like for members, it needs to require a two-thirds vote per the ANCA. So the same high bar that is required for changes by the members has to be the same for the, for the board. But there's other restrictions we want to make sure that the board has. One of the things now that's allowed for a lot of motions at board meetings is you can waive the second motion. This is too important. It's just too important. So you cannot waive changes to the bylaws, you can't waive the second reading. It needs to go to the next month and be voted on again and get passed by two-thirds because it's just too important to try and rush it through. Okay, Article Six. Article Six, most of it didn't change. What we did, a lot of it was we took stuff out of paragraphs, we bulletized it, and we defined the duties of each officer. For Article Seven, we tried to better define the board candidate process. One of the things that we talked about was board residency and, you know, can snowbirds and part-time residents be members of the board? So we went back to the bylaws attorney and said, okay, how does everything stack up for this? And her reply was, it's very common for nonprofit corporations in the state of Arizona to have residency requirements. And we said, okay, that's fine. Is 10 months adequate? And she said that 10 months is fairly consistent, a lot of boards have this. So we put this in because that keeps us, it doesn't necessarily state it in the ANCA, however, that keeps us in line with what most corporations, nonprofit corporations in Arizona do. For Article Eight, we really didn't change very much on it, but one of the things we did change that if there's, if there is a special membership meeting to recall a director and that person is recalled, they can't be, they're not eligible to run in the recall election. Because if you don't say that, the person could turn around, put their name in and put it in the recall election, just didn't make any sense. If you voted not to have the person as a board member, why can they run again in the Okay, Article Nine deals with initiative, referendum, and removal procedures. And what we did was we took just about the whole of Article, what is Article Nine, and we're going to move it into a board policy. The process just didn't need to be in here. What we did do, however, is we defined the specific types of petitions. We moved those into the definitions so the petition types stay in there. However, the actual procedures for doing that is moved into, is going to be moved into a board policy. Then we took Article 12, and since it wasn't an Article Nine anymore, is we moved Article 12 and renumbered it as Article Nine. One of the first things we did is we changed the name of, there's a chair and a co-chair now, we changed that to chair and vice chair, which puts us more in line with Robert's Rules of Order and makes more sense. The other person really is the second person and so chair and vice chair just seems a better way to title it. One of the things I've always had concerns about, and the working group had concerns, is there's no specific enumerated process anywhere that says, can a board member vote in a committee meeting or not? And different committees can have it different ways. We thought there should be one standard for everyone. And what we came up with is that the chair or the chair's representative can only vote in a committee meeting to break a tie. So if it's five-four, chair doesn't vote. If it's four-four, the chair can vote, but to break a tie only. Other than that, the chair can vote. One of the things we were also finding out is, for a long time, committees couldn't meet in July or August. And then it says we could, and now it says, you're not going to force them to meet in July and August, but they may meet in July and August because committees like Finance, Budget, and Audit are working over the budget. They really need to meet in those months. Long-range planning is the same thing. They're going to be dealing with PIF and PIF forecast, they need to be meeting then. Same thing with the Clubs Committee, they need to be meeting them because they're making recommendations that are going to go into the budget. Golf Advisory Committee is the same way. These committees probably should meet in there, we're not going to force them, but the committees have to understand, if you don't want to vote, you end up like we did this year. I'm also the chair of the Golf Advisory Committee and they were complaining in September, well, this is just kind of a rubber stamp. Well, that's true because you opted to not meet. And so if you wait until the end of September to try and change, change things, you're kind of late in the process. So if the committees want to get involved in these things, they need to be active earlier in the process. That's what we want them to do. When we formed this ad hoc working group, there were comments that we got that there's nothing in the bylaws that says we can have an ad hoc working group. And my response, which wasn't very well met, was that it doesn't say we can't. So now we're adding this into that the board can have ad hoc committees or ad hoc working groups. So we're just going to say, we're just going to say what we can have. We're going to make, we're going to allow committees to establish their own procedures to nominate new members. If you're on LRP or if you're on Finance and Budget, there are specific skill sets you really probably should have to be on those committees. And so the committee can decide, okay, what are these skill sets? What is our process for nominating them? However, the chair is still the deciding authority on who actually cuts on the committee. The one big change that we made to the responsibilities committees was for long-range planning. It was the feeling of the working group that long-range planning needs to continue to focus long range. And some of the unfortunate things that we did when we changed BP-17 is the Long Range Planning Committee has spent a lot of time looking at short-range projects in this year and next year. And we thought their focus as a group, we thought their focus should be more long-range and not get into the immediate things that maybe other committees could pick up the slack on. I know that's going to be unhappy, unpleasant for some people. I'm not going to say your name, you're not the only member of long-range planning here. So we took Article 13, renumbered that as Article 10. And Article 10 deals with, slide number 23, with discipline procedures. We wanted to make this whole process more open for each of the people that are involved in it. If you're going to have a board hearing commission, you're going to, there's an incident report followed by, that's going to be filed by a member or a person of the staff. And then there's going to be the person that the report is about. And we felt that the board hearing commission needed to be able to hear from both of these people to make sure that they got both sides of the story of what was going on. Those people can, if they want to, first off, they never have to show up. If you're set up for a board hearing commission, you decide you don't want to show, that's just fine, that's your decision. And if you want to have witnesses, that's fine if you do, but if you don't, that's fine also. So we're not going to force people to appear, we're not going to force people to do that. But we want to give both sides of the story the opportunity to say what happened and to answer questions. One of the things that's come up that we haven't put in that we probably should is, it should probably state in there that each of those parties should meet separately. We don't want to have the person that filed the incident report sitting on the side of the board of the corporate office and the person the incident report is about on the other side of the door. That's just, that's beyond stupid. We don't want that to happen. So we want to, we need to probably put in there that there needs to be separate meetings for each of them so that whoever filed the report doesn't feel inhibited or uncomfortable with being with the person that they filed the report about. So the three ways that we talked about for, that may cause a person to appear before a board hearing commission are violating corporate documents, that hasn't changed, the subject of one, more than one incident report, or accused of egregious process. Now egregious is a very nebulous term, I understand that. But if there's a person that's being violent, the person that's destroying property acts like that, we don't need to wait for them to have multiple offenses. That person probably needs to meet a board hearing commission now. So it is a nebulous term. If you can think of a better one, please let me know, but we couldn't come up with one. We also refined the board hearing process. Like I said, both parties have the chance to meet with a commission and provide witnesses. And if there's no violent, one of the things we changed is, first off, both parties are informed of the outcome. We've had, I had comments from members that exchanges saying, okay, I put an incident report in, I know there was a board hearing commission, but nobody ever told me what the result was and we don't think that's right. If you've, if something's serious enough for you as a person that you filed an incident report and it goes to a board hearing commission, you need to know if the incident was upheld or whether it was not upheld. You have, you have a need to know that. Also, and we've had problems with this in other times, if the board hearing commission goes through the process and they find there's no violation, then all records relating to that incident need to be removed. If you were, for whatever reason, found that, for lack of a better phrase, not guilty, even though it's not a trial, then that shouldn't be sitting in a file someplace to be looked at and referred to in the future. Article 10 was renumbered as Article 11. There's really no significant changes to it. Article 11 was there and now is now renumbered as Article 12. And most of that talks about investment policy and how that works and everything. And that's all going to be moved to a board policy to take that information out of, out of the bylaws. We did add four areas in here because there's always confusion among members, and there was confusion about me when I joined the board, about what are the pots of money that RCSC So one of them is unrestricted operating funds. That's the money comes from your assessments and golf fees and when you pay to attend concerts, all of that money is income, goes into the unrestricted operating funds for the annual budget and the day-to-day operations of the corporation. A second pot of money is restricted operating reserve funds. Those are for emergency use. For those of you that were around then, think about when the roof collapsed here. We didn't expect that, that's not going to be in anybody's forecast. So that restricted operating fund is a rainy day fund for emergency use and has to record, has to get board approval. Third type is PIF funds. PIF funds only get spent through projects that are approved through the PIF forecast and they have to require board approval also. The final thing is restricted SIF funds. And money for the SIF fund comes out of, when someone buys a house, they pay a SIF fee and 5% or 4% of the, of our money goes into it, 4% or 5% goes into the SIF. 4% goes into the SIF fund, that can change. But those are for projects that are on the capital project list and they also require board approval because the capital project list has to get approved by the board annually. We did add a new, a new article in here and it's Article 13, the severability clause. Essentially what the severability clause says, if there is a lawsuit and part of the bylaws are found not to be in compliance and are struck down by a court, the rest of the bylaws are still fine. You can't throw the whole baby out just because there's a, there's a, there's a part, a problem with one part of it. So it allows us to have, still have bylaws, we would just have to rework the area that the court found not valid and we'd go on from there. So let's talk about the membership meetings, membership motions. One of the motions was to record long-range planning, finance, budget, and audit, golf advisory committee, OCC is outreach and communications committee, I knew I'd get that eventually, technology and special committee meetings. We didn't, we decided as a group not to do, not to incorporate that. Because our thoughts were, recording committee meetings may inhibit member comments and we want people to be able to speak freely at committee meetings without having any worry that someone's going to watch this online and they're going to give them flack about it. Because we know that happens, happens in the past, it happens to me all the time. And we didn't want them to subject, be subject to that, be able to do their jobs in their committees without having to worry about somebody coming back to them. Another one was to alternate times for the exchange of board meetings. So that was a motion. It's really not appropriate for the bylaws, we're not going to put that in the bylaws, but it's being referred to the board for consideration. Another motion was to have the board study and recommend removing offensive signs for member misconduct. Yeah, the signs needed to go. But it wasn't appropriate for the annual membership meeting, however, we have changed the signs. Hopefully you're happier with them than you were before because we tried to make the language better than it was. Motions for Article, to amend Article Three. One of them was to formulate and adopt a master plan. Now, as we've talked about, that gets into the business affairs of the corporation, it's not a proper subject, so that's not a motion that we could consider. Going along with that for Article Three, there was a motion to not spend PIF funds over $750,000 until a master plan was adopted. Again, that goes into the business affairs of the corporation. Oh, here we go. Another motion for Article Three was to change the facility agreement to community engagement agreement. We didn't really think there was a lot of benefit from that, so we didn't approve that as a working group. Another motion for Article Three was to give a guest pass to a single member households. Now, we've had, we've gone through the court case in 2019 that says, having the annual assessment by property is valid and is not unreasonable. assessment by property is, is valid and is not unreasonable as a matter of law. However, the thought that if you're a single person, and I understand the thoughts of a single person, if they had two people, now they only have one person in there, why do they still have to pay the same assessments? The state laws, or the state court said we could do it. However, we didn't think it was, it was good if you were a single person, that you would be given a guest pass for another person, just a blank pass that you could give to somebody. We didn't think that was right to give them that benefit when other people couldn't do it. Because for my wife and I, we don't get a guest pass. So why should I give a guest pass just to another person just because they have a single person in the, in the thing, in their, in their house? We also know that there's been a lot of concerns from our members about too many guests and we didn't, we just didn't want to poke that bear. Another, another proposed amendment to Article 3 was to add a member-approved master plan that gets into the business affairs of the corporation still. There was one for Article, Article 4, Section 4, saying that bylaws and master plan amendments passed at an annual meeting can't be amended for, for two years. Gets into the business affairs of the corporation, so we didn't, we didn't move that one forward. However, there was a motion that says the annual meeting will be held in March. Yeah, it needed to be put in there, so we put that in the bylaws. Another motion was to amend how amendments are submitted and proposed. And we liked a lot of the thoughts that the person put in that. We worded it a little bit differently, but most of those thoughts, a lot of that person, a lot of that motion's thoughts actually went into changes that we have. There was a motion to amend Article 12 to change the elections committee to elections and ethics committee. We didn't think that adding ethics into the election committee was a good fit, so we didn't recommend that one. Another motion for Article 12, Section 1, was the wording. We liked the wording. We had changes to it, but a lot of the information, the thought process behind that, that motion is actually put into the bylaws, our recommendations to the bylaws. Another motion for, to amend Article 12, Section 3, concerning committee members, the process for selecting committee members and selecting members to new committees. We liked a lot of that, so we added a lot of that language in there. But the names have been changed to protect the innocent, so we changed the wording on it. But a lot of the thought process behind it is still there. And there was also a motion to change and reorganize several parts of the bylaws, move information into board policies. And it was a really long, involved motion. And it was just really too much for something to be put in a board motion, but what we did is we handed it off to people in different committees and let them work on it. So some of the areas that were in that were, were incorporated and some weren't. And you also can't put up, something in the bylaws about creating or taking out board policies, it just doesn't work too well. So where do we go from here? When we get done with the town hall today, there's going to be a town hall on the 22nd at 5:00? At 5:00, right here? When we get done with that, we've set up a meeting, the bylaws working group will be getting together the day after the 22nd, which will be the 23rd. On the 23rd, to go over all the recommendations that the people have given us at both of the bylaw, at both of the bylaws town halls. We've also gotten some written recommendations from people and those will also be considered by the bylaws working group there, too. Of course, anything changes to the bylaws or recommended changes to the bylaws are going to have to go back to the bylaws attorney to make sure we're still in line with the statutes. And then the first reading and vote on the bylaws is going to be a special session right here on October 29th. And the second reading and vote on the bylaws will be in a special session again right here on November 10th. And with that, I'll open the floor to your questions. Please remember the, the guidance that Tom gave us. Only one person, say one thing. Wait until everybody else has had a chance to say your piece, and if you have more things to come up, you can come up then. But we'd like to give every member a chance to say what their, their thoughts are before we go into the second rounds for people. Thank you. Microphone, yeah. That would be a good idea, wouldn't it?
I believe we're at either eight or nine. Does anyone have number eight? Oh, but you don't count Richie, so.
I shouldn't. All right. Three minutes.
Name and.
You want to see the number?
All right. So your name and, and your rec. number and.
Richie Miller, 103.
What specific part you were trying to, or wished to focus on?
I'm going to have to stick to one.
Okay.
Richie Miller, 103, 368. You know, I began reading this, set of bylaws, and I started on page one, which made sense to me. First two paragraphs are kind of useless boilerplate. Then there's two definitions. And then we come to another one. The third one is business affairs of the corporation. The old definition is 42 words and does a pretty good job. You struck 17 words. Added 110 of useless detail and confusion, and then you called it a day. Looks like someone is getting paid by the word. And I think that's true. We don't pay you guys much. This is kind of a violation of what I think bylaws should be. Adjectives might apply like concise or precise, succinct, clear. I think we're violating all of those in that first paragraph. It's really worded, wordy, and it's also repeating what's in the articles. The articles go into a lot of detail on what the business is of the corporation. That's the only thing I can talk about. So I thought we had thinking adults when I helped elect you to the board, and I'm questioning that a little bit now, and that's bad when I do that. I think you should be hanging your head in shame, I'm sorry. Really. It saddens me. Thank you.
Did you want to comment? I don't, I just want to take that back.
Well, I'm sorry you feel that way, Richie. In the long and short run, lawyers rule a lot of our world. And the legalese goes in there, and unfortunately, it's long and involved. And I didn't like it, but it's a foolish board or a group of people that takes what their legal counsel tells them and throws it out. So we didn't feel we could do that. So we, we left the wording the way that she gave it to us. I'm sorry you feel that way.
Tom? Director Gray.
Thank you. I appreciate being concise. I really do. I think this is, isn't necessarily concise, but I do think it's thorough. And one of the reasons I felt it was important to have a thoroughness there is one of the biggest points of confusion with our members is what's the, the membership we're allowed to vote on and what they're not allowed to vote on. And I didn't see a good, clear communication on the true definition of the business of the corporation. So it may be wordy, but again, the importance of thoroughness and clarity is, to me, much more important. And this is a key issue because every one of our members want to be able to vote on certain things. And if they don't understand thoroughly what is allowed by members to vote on and what's only allowed by directors to vote on, then there's confusion, there's contention and, and misinformation. So I think the thoroughness is more important to have clarity. And so I think that's, that's why it's important to have a little more language.
I would echo Director Gray's thoughts as I very clearly remember that evening in last March when I sat here and told you or read from you the, the findings of our general counsel who said that those motions were not proper motions for a membership meeting because they referred to a variety of different reasons, but mainly the business affairs of the corporation. So if there was anything, if there was anything that caused that working group to be formed, it was to delineate the difference between the business affairs of the corporation and the, the other business that were appropriate areas for the members to, to make amendments to or propose amendments for. So I'm disappointed that, that the previous speaker was frustrated by that definition. It is certainly long and wordy, but it's important in order to maintain that delineation between those two very specific groups so that we don't come to a, to a point in a membership meeting and have a fight over whether or not something is appropriate for that meeting or not. So, sorry that that's frustrating, but it is required in order to keep those two different, two different areas delineated and bifurcated so that we conduct our business appropriately. Number nine?
You're not going to let him talk? Go ahead, you're doing good. We're trying to get John to talk. He doesn't do that very often.
I'm sorry. John, would you wish to call number nine?
Number nine, please.
How's that?
Excellent.
I didn't know what the number should be.
Okay.
Tom Marone, 100825. I'm going to touch on line 570 in a minute. All I can say is wow, and not in a good way. I won't bore you or the members with my many comments because I've already submitted my comments to you. I hope you decided to read them. Besides, these changes need much more in-depth dialogue with the members than just three-minute soundbites. In general, I strongly believe that these bylaws violate the very spirit of our Articles of Incorporation and the sense of community. Instead of doing anything and everything in the interest of the members, they seem to be doing anything and everything in the interest of this board. We definitely have lost many of our privileges, and those we still do have have become harder to implement. Instead of taking advantage of those statutes that offer to yield their authority to the corporation's Articles of Incorporation or bylaws and revising the bylaws in a manner that is more member-friendly, these bylaws pretty much stick to the letter of the law and has taken the advantage of every possible roadblock or prohibition against the membership. I've got one question and one comment, well, a suggestion. The suggestion is, if you don't want those rules that would be moving into the board policies to immediately die, disappear, and no longer exist as soon as you approve those bylaws, I would suggest you add a proviso to the motion stating that once approved, the bylaws don't go into effect until the approval of the board policies. My question is, line 570. Are you really prepared to spend $25,000 to $30,000 to print up and mail out ballots for over 30,000 members in accordance to the Arizona revised statutes 10-3708, which mandates that if you're going to do an action without holding a meeting, the corporation has to deliver a written ballot to every member entitled to vote on the matter? And there's a whole, if you go to the statute, you see everything that needs to be written on that ballot. Other than that, in the famous words of British historian Lord Acton, "Power tends to corrupt, and absolute power corrupts absolutely." Thank you.
All right. Director Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. This was based on a lot of this from my perspective as a legislator. And one of the things we do at the legislature is we have as much time available for people to have input on bills so that they can make changes. If you look further into that section that you quoted, there is a line in there that clearly says that if you have online voting, that that qualifies. We have a situation where we don't get a lot of engagement with our members. We don't get a lot of voting. And there's been complaints about that. What we've set up here is to try and give the maximum amount of voting opportunity to the maximum number of members, including their ability to refine and, and speak on proposals, which is again, what we did in the legislature. We had meetings, we had openness. People could speak and we could change things. But again, if you look at the full section that you just quoted, you will see in there that it clearly articulates that if we have online voting, we don't have to mail out to everybody. One of our priorities also, because we have a financial situation, is to maintain as reasonable cost as possible, to send out 33,000 or more postage cards to people that are going to ignore them and not vote, actually cost our members money. And so we want to balance between how can we maximize the number of people voting and aware, but minimize the amount of money that we spend? And so this, this, this actually gives everybody an opportunity to have input. It gives them the, the ability to, again, hear what's going on, have changes if they want to suggest that to the members, but, but not spend more money than we have to. So again, that's that balancing. That's the, the fine needle that we're trying to thread for the benefit of our community.
Just before you stand up there, sir, thank you for just a moment. This is for your comments. We're not going to have a debate here. These comments will go back to the working group and, and they'll consider those. And, and when the, the, the final drafts of these things come out after that consideration, we'll still have the board meetings where each motion, or each article is considered. And again, you'll have a chance to make comments before board votes on each article by article by article. Okay.
Also, if you, if you want to come back and talk back about your, talk about your comments because you weren't happy with the response that you got, please wait until other people get a chance, so everybody has a chance to go through, and then you're free to come back again.
All right. Director Berset?
Yes. Robert Court, 141991. I'm here to discuss the bylaws, lines 306 through 324. The, the, the bylaws are written from the Articles of Incorporation, Article 8, Section 5, which states in part, "All members shall be equal, and all members shall have equal rights and privileges, and be subject to equal responsibilities." Those responsibilities are the assessment fee. Without the assessment fee, you have no rights and you have no privileges, and those are supposed to be equal per member. It goes on to say, "Such bylaws shall also prescribe the method for determining the assessments to be paid by the members. The two methods employed in our bylaws are per person and per property. Individuals who purchased prior to 2003 are charged per person at half the rate." That implies it's not equal for all. The per property method allows a two-member household to pay half the amount per member of a single-dead, dead household, resulting in further inequality. As it stands, every member prior to 2003 and every member of a two-dead property is paying half the rate of a single-dead property owner per member. Given that our Articles of Incorporation explicitly state that these responsibilities should be equal per member, this section of the bylaws clearly violates Article 8, Section 5. The Articles of Incorporation are the laws that you pledge to uphold, and the byproducts are simply the byproducts of those laws and must not be in conflict according to Article 8, Section 3. One could argue that in 2003 and prior, no one was being cheated because everyone was paying the same per person half rate. However, 20 years later, you are fully aware that one half of your membership is subsidizing the other half by paying double the amount for the services amenities that we all have to pay for annually. More than anything in this city, the assessment fee is something that affects every member. If the board does not amend this portion of the bylaws, then you will be complicit in the theft of half of your members. I got three questions. Why would any board member want any paperwork like bylaws, corporate documents, or legal documents to explicitly charge one member more than any other member as it applies to our yearly assessments? Question two, why does this board ignore and defend the fact that this portion of the bylaw is in direct conflict with the equities? the bylaw is in direct conflict with the equality of responsibilities outlined in Article 8, Section 5? And question three, what will this board do to correct the inequality of the bylaws that has been in place for the past 20 years?
I can start with that. We were, thank you for your comments.
Okay.
We were sued about this. We went to court, and the court said specifically that the per property is fair and equal. That is the Arizona courts. Sir, if you want more comments, wait until everybody is done, please. But the courts have ruled on this, and if we change it, then we also get in violation of what the court has ruled. And that's not a good way to do business.
But did, okay. Right. Director Berset?
Number 12, please.
Oh, boy. Good morning. Candy Ruggeriell, member number 157, 480, and good morning, and thank you to the committee for the plethora of hours that they spent trying to put all this stuff together. I commend you for your dedication to it. I'd like to comment on line 1242, which is at the bottom of your Page 32 on the top of Page 33 regarding the Long Range Planning Committee. I am a member of the committee, but I wanna put a disclaimer in here. I am not representing the committee this morning, nor are my comments, the general consensus of the committee itself. These are my comments alone. My concern is putting the five-year time limit on the projects that Long Range Planning is working on. We have a lot of big-ticket items coming up in the next couple of years, 1 through 4. And unless I'm missing something, I don't see that there's a committee that's overseeing, per Board Policy 16, the monies that are gonna be spent, specifically Lakeview's coming up in a couple of years. So my thought was, for your consideration, don't put a year limit on it, but consider the dollar amount of the project. And that would be the PIF in the 15 years, and if SIF qualifies for part of it, but not all of it, put a dollar amount to it rather than the number of years, until you establish a group that would oversee the 1 to 4 years. Thank you.
Okay.
And I think those are good comments, Candy. And as Tom said earlier, we're going to have to change board policies as a result of changes to this. So if this goes through, then we're gonna have to change Board Policy 16 to accommodate that gap between there. Five years is an interesting timeframe. If you look online, Long Range Planning, they say starts at 3 to 5 years from now, so there could be some wiggle room on that. But the working group really felt that the Long Range Planning Committee needed to continue to focus long-term and not near-term, and then we would have to set up a mechanism for whatever committees or group of people are gonna be able to work on those projects or go through the business case and so on and so forth in the shorter term.
Okay. I think you will see when Board Policy 16's proposals are brought out, that we've been thinking ahead on exactly the questions that you just raised, and trying to address those in revisions to BP 16. Director Berset?
13, please. Number 13? Number 14, please. Who has the next number after 14, please? Your number, sir?
Bill Pearson, 133438. I wanna talk about the annual membership meeting. 1981 was the single most contentious year in the RCSC's history. Twelve candidates that ran for the board. The three that were elected were an interesting lot because they were kind of the, they had a difference of opinion of the board members that were already seated, which resulted in a recall election for the president and the vice president, that was defeated, by the way. But it's also the year that the RCSC decided to lock members out of their board meetings, and they could submit questions. That lasted for two meetings, by the way, because it wasn't very popular with the membership. However, what they didn't do, what they didn't do was say that we're not gonna follow the Articles of Incorporation, which, by the way, back then was four meetings a year, 100 members for a quorum, they continued to hold them. They weren't afraid of the membership, they believed that the membership was the essence of the community. Your annual membership, I don't, Preston, I hope you listen to yourself as you read through the hoops we have to jump through to submit motions. It's ludicrous. What was the obligation before, or still, for that matter, 10 days in advance? And you still had the right to go through them, as we saw in 21 and 24, when you told us, "No, you don't have any right to vote on those." That's the net of where we are right now. You don't have the right to vote. So let me give you the classic example. Let's say I think that your annual membership meeting submission at the end of September, with then sending to the attorney who told us, "You don't have the right to vote twice," for approval, with them, him sending them back maybe to give approval, and then you guys telling us we can fix them, and then it might go to a board or working group with a vote, not only at the membership meeting, but away from the maddening crowd, because you're gonna stimulate member engagement? How's that working for us, Rick? You got two candidates for four spots, brother. Membership engagement, I know, I'll be on point, I always am. Membership engagement isn't this thing that just happens by magic, and it certainly doesn't happen with what you've done to the annual membership meeting. They didn't have the guts to do to the members what you guys just did. Thank you.
Amen. Amen.
Can I address that? Director Kice?
I understand what you're saying. Obviously, I don't necessarily agree. Yeah, there's a lot of steps in the process, I agree with that. However, how many times, we didn't vote last time? How many times do we not vote? We need to find a way to get more people engaged. And I would take issue with the fact that we only have, there's a, saying the only reason that we have two candidates going forward for elections this year and say that's all on one body of people, without saying that, okay, we already lost one board member because she couldn't take the vitriolic comments that she gets, and we have another one that's not running because they felt the same way. I think there is, if you wanna play spring, I think it goes in both directions. We are very open to finding a better process to get the members involved in motions. If you can come up with a better selection, or a better process, please, come and tell us about it, don't just say, "It's bad." Give us a better way to do it. What happens, you know, to send the motions at a membership meeting, have people comment on it for just a few minutes, and then vote on it, is just not a good way to work and to make sure the motions are the best for our corporation. So, yes, something needs to change. If you can find a better way, please let us know, and we'll work with you on it.
I would simply add, it's not just trying to find a better method, it's trying to find a better method consistent with the laws of the state of Arizona. We, and as much as Mr. Pearson was stating his opinion as to what we had or had not done, we were not in compliance with the state laws of Arizona. We have to revise these bylaws in order to get in compliance. It wasn't that way back when we designed these bylaws, or that board way back when designed bylaws intentionally in contravention with the state of Arizona, but the state of Arizona's laws have changed, and we need to be in compliance with those. This working group did not just willy-nilly go out there dreaming up stuff. They've had legal guidance from day one to make sure that what they did was not going to be in contravention with the state laws. And I'm sorry if you're uncomfortable with some of those procedures that are coming out of this long, long working group sessions, but we are not here to practice civil disobedience. We're here to be in compliance with the state of Arizona's laws and give the membership every opportunity we possibly can within the state law. So I understand the frustration, I understand the resentment even, but at the end of the day, you have to be able to say, "I'm doing what I'm supposed to do relative to what the state mandates us to be able to do as a nonprofit corporation." Okay. Director Berset?
Wait, Tom.
I'm sorry. Director Gray?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to make a comment, too, that we, I hear a lot about self-governance, and people are rattling about self-governance. We have a self-governance in our community because we have representatives, just like in our state and federal government, being elected. This board has a fiduciary responsibility, which means we can be penalized if we start doing things wrong. If we look at democracy, if everybody gets a vote, that's clearly not the type of self-governance that we have. So, to think that, and I hear this a lot, it seems like there's this connotation that if you're on the board, you're devious, you're vile, and you've got ulterior motives and you're trying to undermine our community. The people on this board, and I had some questions before I ran, but the people on this board have a fiduciary responsibility that we have to maintain, or we can be sued. And I take that fiduciary responsibility very clearly, very dearly. It's important. And so, this whole kind of sense that we are up here doing something devious, when what we're trying to do is give the maximum number of members, the maximum amount of ability to be informed and to make decisions effectively at the lowest cost to them. And if that upsets some people, that's fine, we have to fulfill our fiduciary responsibility. And so, again, when you look at self-government, I would encourage you to look up the definition and not just hear and regurgitate a phrase, "We don't have self-governance."
Thank you, Director Gray.
You know, there might be a simpler way to do this. If a member wants to put a motion forward, put the motion forward, you gotta send it to the lawyers to see if it's a proper subject or not, and then we'll just, and then we'll just go from there and do the same sort of things. If you put them, like you would put it in the annual meeting, put your motion forward, people can vote on it, and we'll take the results of it, then you won't have to jump through all the hoops if you don't want to. I mean, there are ways to work this. We're open to suggestions on it, but just saying this sucks doesn't, isn't profitable. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Director Berset?
Okay, the numbers aren't working, so we'll go, I'll just call them here. 16, please.
Lynda McIntyre, 123216. First, I wanna thank you all for the hours and hours that you've all put into this. I know it's been excessive. I wanna just briefly address Article 9, Committees. Starts at number, line 1129, appointment of chairs and vice-chairs. I'm a little disappointed that there's still the chairs and vice-chairs as both directors. I understand the chairs should be directors, but I think there's an opportunity for vice-chairs to be members. Every board that I've either served on, or I've been the CEO of the organization, the vice-chairs have been members. And I think there's a great opportunity for others to be involved in the committees. We all know how hard board members work and how thin your stretch. We only have to look at the calendars that you all have been involved in, especially for this last year. Maybe this has been a one-off, but I don't see your workloads getting less as we move forward. The workload is getting bigger. And one way that you can reduce your workload is to spread the workload. You have many, many, many qualified members in this community to serve as your vice-chairs. And I think, I would like you to consider looking at amending the bylaws to allow your vice-chair to be a qualified member of your committee to serve. I don't think there's any reason why you can't go to the members. If you look at every single one of your committees, there's plenty of opportunity. And I just want that to be considered, I won't belabor that any longer. I can write to you, Preston, and give you more of my thoughts on that. Thank you.
You're always free to write to me.
I know. Thank you.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Do we have anything from people online? Okay, good. Keep forgetting to ask that.
All right.
I can do it. Oh, Scott, hi. Oh, by the way, this is Scott Borden, he was on the committee, too. Scott just flew in this morning, so thank you for coming in, short notice.
If I can, is it working? Lynda, if I could call you, Lynda, I appreciate your words, I really do. I'm full-time employee still, I'm not retired, I work 60 to 80 hours a week, and I appreciate your comment about the board. None of these people up here on the board, including myself, are getting paid. And, you know, to Mr. Pearson's comment of, there's, there wasn't, there's two open boards members open right now, it has a lot to do with the pushback of the members. And I got involved, and I was involved in this because of the membership that took earlier into place this year. I was concerned, just like all you folks, you know, and I said, "You know what? I have two hours every other week." That wasn't the case.
Surprise?
Surprise, yeah. It turned into 12 to 20 hours a week, because there was so much prep before these meetings, and it turned into every week. So I looked back at it, and it was a great experience for me, it was a great experience for, to get to know the board, the president, all the officers, and I have deep, deep respect for everybody up here on the table. They're putting in 40 to 60 hours a week themselves right now, and this is during their golden retirement years. So I appreciate that, but, you know, long story short, the other reason I'd get involved in, again, Mr. Pearson, I don't mean to single you out, I'm gonna be running, you know, in 2029, once I retire, but I wanted to get my feet wet. I wanted to understand. I wanted to be efficient and be able to understand, and day one, being able to understand, because it's like drinking from a garden hose. I can tell you, I'm well-educated, I've been in business for over 40 years, and it was, the first six weeks were very, very difficult for me to absorb everything. So, not really a comment, but I just wanna say thank you to the members out here, because I'm a member. And I've been here two years and three months, and I hope I'm here another 20 years as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Director Berset?
Thank you, Mr. De Meyer.
Jean Totten, 148753. Are you doing this differently than you do at exchange and board meetings where you ask us to give all of our questions?
Yeah, do it now.
We're only supposed to do one at a time?
No, all the questions, all the questions you have, Jean, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the working group. I'm asking you to please provide a copy of the presentation to the members, either online that we can print ourselves, if you're concerned about the cost of printing, or that you provide for us. for us. What was the majority vote of your working group? What was the number considered majority?
Five.
Thank you. Way back when, when we did bylaws, did we follow ANC?
Ask all your questions, then we'll try and answer them that way.
Oh, okay, you'll remember that. Very good.
I got them written down.
Oh, okay. Article five, B 673. This takes my time, which you didn't start the clock for Lynda. Let's see.
Jean, do you have a line number?
Yep, 673.
There you go. That's the easiest way to do it.
It's the easiest way for you, but anybody who's listening is not gonna have a clue what I'm asking, but member comments at board meetings will be limited to posted motion, blah, 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 blah. And then it says, but pertaining to the treasurer and management at the next exchange. So are you saying that we cannot make comments at board meetings regarding the treasurers and the manager report, only at exchanges or at the board meetings? The committee chair or designated representative can only vote to break a tie. Who is a designated representative? You didn't state who that was. And I'm curious. Business affairs of the corporation, line fifteen. Can you give me an example of any other matter not expressly reserved to the members by the Articles of Incorporation? Give me an example, please. Not a number, but a question? Will we? I have to go sit down.
Finish your question.
Will we know who the bylaw's attorney is? And did we increase the line item in the budget for this person since we are consulting them so much? And I'd also like to ask that we keep board comments or working group comments to three minutes, which is what we are only allowed.
Let me work on these. Yes, we will send the presentation, I will send the presentation out, I'll give it to them, and they can put it out on, on an email blast. Jim, you worked on the bylaws last year. Did you work with, in a, a bylaws attorney on that?
I did, but we weren't working on, at the broader spectrum of stuff that we did this year. And we, we questioned a couple of things, but we didn't get into the level of detail along that line as the motions, because that, I think that's the biggest piece that's difficult to understand. But we have probably not reflected the ANCA requirements, and that's why we were so surprised when they came back this time. In the, in the past, the attorney came out and said, "That's inappropriate," and they just stopped, that they didn't look to define why it was inappropriate. So this time, we went to a bylaws attorney, somebody who, that's their practice, and we got a much clearer response back. As you can see, it's rather verbose in its definition, but it covers the whole thing. And so we have probably not been in compliance with ANCA for ten years or more. There were statute changes that we just didn't pick up.
Jim? Jim, you're gonna get the bell. For the treasurer management's report at, at the, at the monthly board meeting, yes, you're allowed to do that, but as you know, sometimes people come up and they ask fifteen questions about what's going on in the management report. It, it's probably better to get all those questions down, put them all together, and then, and give a report back on that. If a person just asks one or two questions that can be answered readily, yeah, that's fine, but if someone comes up with a whole list of fifteen questions, we'll probably, we may, we may provide answers to that later. Or if it's an involved question that requires some, some, some research, then it may, that may be delayed also. But we're going to get the members' questions answered. The bylaws attorney was Ashley Spear. Her name is Ashley Spear, and she was, she's worked with us before, and she's really sharp. Designated representative, this would also go in, in line with what the, the recommendation that Lynda had, that if there's a chair and a vice chair, the chair can't be there, the designated representative would be like me looking to Tom and say, "Okay, I can't be at the meeting, can you run the meeting?" That's a designated representative. Let's see. For, we, we blew our budget for attorney fees months and months ago with lawsuits. So yes, we have blown our budget completely for attorney fees this year, but it was, for something as important as this, we thought it was essential, so that was more important, and we're gonna have to compensate in other areas for it. But yeah, we, we went out of the budget for attorney fees months ago. I think that answers everything. Mike?
I have a question. It's kind of worded weird, so I think it's directed at Director Gray, from Michael Wendell, 145206. Please explain the Sun City West Torch Program and how it may help address Bill Pearson's comments. When will the board take serious action on this?
Director Gray?
Mr. President, I would gladly do that if I have permission, but it's not really in line with our bylaws right now.
It is not.
So I appreciate the question from, from Mike. It, it is an important one, but to try and keep us on track to where we're going, I'll defer to maybe the next time he can ask that question, I'd be happy to, to comment on it.
For those of you that aren't aware, the Sun City West Torch Program is a program they have to mentor people, to get them prepared to become members of the board, and to get them involved, and it's a fantastic program.
Right. Thank you. Director Brissette.
Number eighteen, please.
Good morning. My name is Phil Sia Jr., 153995. I submitted the language to add a guest pass for a single-deded residence. And you cited up there the, a court case, and let me be clear, it had, I 100% support the rooftop assessment fee. So it has nothing to do with the assessment fee. It was just the, the guest pass for, for a single-deded resident. You, in my, in my communication back and forth with you, you indicated that your, your position in the, in the board's position was that it would give non-residents access to our facilities. But yet, pickleball players, card players, they bring guests every single day, and they pay $2.50. And then you referenced that you and your wife wouldn't have a guest pass. Well, but you have two passes for your deeded rooftop residence, so why shouldn't a single residence have two passes? That's, that's, was my point of contention, not, not the court case, had nothing to do with the court case or the assessment fee.
Thanks, Phil. And I, I can understand your comments on it, and we have traded a number of emails on this. And it was, the court case said that all the property assessments have to go by rooftop. It didn't, it didn't go into the number of people on it. And it just, our thought as a group, and the group can correct me if they feel differently, our thought as a group was that if you give a person a guest pass, just because they're a single resident, a single owner, then people that are two owners, that's an advantage that you're getting a single owner, just because there's only one of them, that you're not having others. It just didn't, we just, as a group, didn't make sense. If others want to elucidate, they can.
Well, I think there was some concerns about where those individual guest passes, and not to suggest that, to Phil, that you were gonna start a black market in, in guest passes, but, but I think there was a concern that there would be a loss of control of who those guests would be, and, and were they appropriate individuals that, that we were looking for to share our facilities with. Yes, there are always, you know, ways to try to address disciplinary actions, but I think there was some, some legitimate concern that, that to just allow a, a unilateral pass to an unknown individual was, it, it caused some concern on the members of the working group. Director Brissette?
Nineteen, please.
My name is Steve Collins. I was, I just want to touch on, I heard things coming up, and I want to touch on them. I, I was the vice president of the metal club in 2017 through 2020, and we had an issue with, with flooding, and, and I tried to get the, the board and management to fix the problem. And I couldn't get anywhere. So in 2020, I ran for the board. And I got on the board, and I still didn't get, I couldn't get anything accomplished for a couple of years. Until, because even if you get on the board, you still gotta get five votes. So it took me a while, but then I finally got, and I told the, the general manager, he said, "Why didn't, why did you wait till now?" I said, "Because I now have the power." Because I had four other people that would go along with me, and we went forward, and we'd been working on it, and we're fixing it. As far as motions, if people want motions, everybody has my phone number, I've left it at every meeting, I've left it everywhere. You can call me, and I will make a motion in front of this board. You don't have to wait for once a year. So I didn't run this year. My wife is really, was urging me not to, I haven't been feeling great. I wish I could feel better, because I wasn't finished. There's a lot of things I, I want to see through, and I just, right now, I just don't feel like I can do that. So time will tell. And, but my one thing I'm up here for is if I, if you guys would please look at line item 1402G, a redacted copy of all reports. I, I do not feel that the persons writing the conduct reports or incident reports should get this, or the person who is accused. This, the, only the board members that are in the actual hearing get to see the reports, not even the rest of the board members. So handing out these documents could be detrimental and be a violation of privacy, because these are confidential things. So I, I really would not like to see the redacted copies go out. Keep it with the people who are, who are, we have getting them right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Director Brissette?
Hold on. I've got things to do. Twenty, please.
Tom Maron, 100.
One second, Tom. Has everybody that wanted to speak had a chance to come up, please? Then come on up, man.
Hi, my name is Lynda Evenson. My number is 148121. And I just have a couple of questions. And one of them is, when you guys got together as a working group, and you divided it up, it sounded like, into groups and articles on what you were gonna be speaking to, then did that specific group meet individually, and then you all came together? And that's when you got the consensus on this? So the people that were working with a specific group did not hear a lot of the comments or questions that another group did, but you still came together to get a consensus for the proposed bylaw? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Were there any current board members or board or members of management at any of these meetings as an observer? Was there legal counsel at the meetings, or were they just apprised of what was going on at the meetings via email or conversations? And I think Tom already answered this question, and that was whether these motions or changes to the bylaw be presented as a package deal? He indicated that no, it would not be. They're gonna be individually asked and voted on? And if that's the case, should a member sign up to speak on every single change in case an amendment or an addendum is brought up, so that they can come back and speak again? Even if they didn't want to speak the first time, but just so that it's clear that they have to come up and speak, or sign up to speak for the original one? And I think that's all, other than a comment that I would have regarding the five-year team. There really would not be any need to have a member of the LRP committee be a part of that team, because we are supposed to be focused on five years and beyond. So it would not, that subcommittee would not even be needed. And secondly, just one quick question, because we can find finances to pay for a lawyer, but we can't find finances for a master plan. Thank you.
Do you want to start, Director Gray?
Yeah, let me start from the first one. Yes, the subgroups met individually, went over them, went over their areas, and then when we got together, the subgroup specifically went through, this is the changes that we're recommending, this is why we're recommending them. So the whole group was in and on the dialogue on it, but we were in on, they were, everybody was in on the conversations about whether this was good or not, or what to do with it, and there were changes as a result of it. So there was a lot of, a lot of interface between them at the meetings. There were board members at the meetings, President Foster was there for most of them. I don't know if there were management there also? No, I don't think so. The only time, for the most part, the only time, the lawyers, let me try this again. There was only one time that we were in a meeting actually with the lawyer, that was at the end of it. So when we sent things off to her by articles, we went, she replied by email, it was all by email. With the only time that we, she chimed in, or she came in in a meeting remotely, was at the last meeting that we had to make the last changes on it. So, so that was the only time where she was kind of in person with us. The master plan's gonna cost somewhere between $400,000 and $1 million. We didn't pay that much in legal fees. And I'll talk, let you talk about, or somebody else talk about the process for them that we're discussing at the special meetings for the bylaws.
Okay. So you did hear correctly that I was, the intent, when we do have the board meeting and, on the 29th, that we will look at each section. So we'll start with definitions, then Article One, then Article Two, then Article Three, and, and there will be comments by someone who makes that motion, then it opened to the floor for comments from the membership, and then comments from board members. And if there, at least the plan at the moment, and we will have to pass some, perhaps some special rules for, for that particular meeting in order to do this. special rules for that particular meeting in order to do this, so you'll see that when the agenda comes out. But the intent would be that if a board member wished to make an amendment or propose an amendment to one of the articles, they could do that, and anyone who had signed up to speak on that particular article would have an opportunity, time limit opportunity, but an opportunity to address that proposed amendment. That will take us time, quite honestly, but the intent was to give as much opportunity for members and board members to speak to those things as possible, and by the way, board members would be timed as much as members. Some of us are very verbose, and I've been accused of that many times, so I'll be timed as much as anyone, like right now. So yes, your specific question was, is the incentive then to the member to sign up for every article in order to be able to address a proposed amendment to a particular article that perhaps you weren't even ready to do? But yes, that's how you would do it. You would, you would sign up for every one of them, and that's your right to do. And if it takes us all night, then it does, but we will go article by article and vote on them one by one by one, and if they pass, great, if they don't, then we'll have to take them back and keep working on them. But the intent is to get through them, if at all possible, and we'll see how it goes. Did we address everything, Linda? Okay, thank you. Director Brissette?
I think we had somebody else. Yes.
Okay.
Susan Bjork, 112650. Well, Preston, you didn't call my name out, you said there are other LRP members in here. I don't have a poker face either.
I shouldn't have looked at you, I'm sorry.
I know.
I'm sorry. My mistake.
And thank you for acknowledging. Anyways, I don't think I have to bring that up, because we're going to meet tomorrow about LRP responsibilities, but there are some concerns about the five-year, and I know why it was put in there, because while we were trying to recommend the dollar amount last year, we tried to bring up certain projects that were within the five years that hadn't started yet to make comments, and we were shut down. Those projects we couldn't speak about. So one of the things that I think you need to consider is that there are things that happen that may impact the full dollar amount of the 10-year PIF, that may impact things within the first five years that we may have to look at in order to adjust the figures in and out, like we have been doing. We have done that over and over. We've brought dollars way out here, back to a couple of years in. And so if we don't have that ability, that just defeats the purpose. The other thing is that if we're only allowed to make recommendations on new projects, how can we be responsible for the entire 10 years, knowing that things do adjust? This is what corporations do, is they look at things that come, that are incoming and saying, "Oh, well, we had this plan, but now with that coming up, we might need to adjust that." That's going to impact that first five years, and that's my biggest beef with that. But we'll talk about that tomorrow, and I'll gladly expound, as I usually do. The other thing is, I'm not going to comment, because you already know how I feel about the overall bylaw package. I've already commented to many people, and again, no poker face here. But what I would like to say is, because I know you're about ready to pass these, regardless of what people say back here, what is going to be the process for this year's annual meeting, since we're already past September and we can't submit motions? Thank you.
I'm almost afraid to say this, but it is the way it is. So as Director Kice had so concisely said, legal tends to rule our lives these days, and legal will have an impact on how we handle the annual meeting coming up for this particular March. And so we've been thinking ahead of exactly what Ms. Bjork just raised, how are you going to deal with that? And we have a plan for that, but the plan, thank you, legal counsel, cannot be implemented until these bylaws. If they are indeed passed, then we can come forward with a proposed special motion that would make a special process of how we would handle the March annual meeting. And it would be similar to what Director Kice has outlined, only a little bit more condensed, in order to get it done in the shorter timeframe. But yes, very perceptive of you, Ms. Bjork, to have realized that, wait a minute, that's not working for this upcoming meeting. And we had thought about that, and as much as Director Gray and his subgroup had worked hard on how that meeting was going to work, the upcoming meeting presented special issues, and so we've, we do have a plan for that, and if these bylaws are adopted, then, oh, sorry, I've done it again. We have a plan. Trust me.
You need to put him on a clock.
All right. I'll do my best.
I believe we're at number 20. Is that correct?
Okay, last chance. Does anybody that had a first comment make Heather's chance or not? Okay, then please come up.
Tom Maron, 100825. Director Gray, when, he was commenting that according to 3708, you're not going to have to spend all this money for all this postage, because some of these ballots can be submitted electronically and other methods. But I think the point that he's missing is that when you're holding a vote without having a meeting, you have to notify every member in good standing who is eligible to vote, to cast a vote. You have to let these people know what the heck they're going to be voting on. You can't, you can't submit, you can't tell half the population that we're going to hold a vote and not tell the other half of the population you're going to hold a vote. So according, the way I interpret this statute, is you have to notify every member who's entitled to vote, if you're going to hold a meeting, if you're going to hold a vote without a meeting. That's my argument. So take it from there. Thank you.
And I think it's a worthwhile point, Tom, and we'll, we're going to have to send it back to the legal experts to get their opinion on it, but it's worth asking the question. We'll ask the question on it.
All right. Am I correct that everyone has spoken who?
No, he's.
I'm sorry?
Come on up, sir.
Sir Holt, was it?
141991. I'm assuming this was a bylaws group here?
Yes.
And so I ask you, not about a lawsuit, I realize you won a lawsuit, you're always going to win a lawsuit, you've got more money than most of us do. So you're going to win a lawsuit. But I ask you how you're going to rectify your article saying things are supposed to be equal, and a bylaw specifically saying things are not equal, rather what some judge said or some law said. I'm not, I'm asking you guys personally, because you're the nine people we vote for. You've got an article that says things are supposed to be equal in the responsibilities that we pay, you've got a bylaw that specifically says that some people are going to pay half the rate. Those two things don't line up. And if you have two people in one house paying 650, that means they're paying 325 apiece. This one's paying 650, that is not equal per member, according to your own articles. And you have an article that says you can't write a bylaw that's in conflict. So I'm asking a bylaw group, how do you fix that bylaw? And you rushed off to say, "Well, we had a lawsuit." I don't care about that. I understand you had one, and you won, but why would you want to win? Why would you want to win a lawsuit that says, "Hey, we have the right to rip off half our people"? I don't get that, from nine people that are supposed to represent all of us. I don't understand it. And here's the problem with giving out the extra pass. We already have equal privileges. Two people over here, each have an equal privilege. They can go golf, or go bowling, anything they want, and the one person over here has an equal privilege. What we don't have in equality is what we pay for, for those rights and privileges. That's where the inequality is at, is what we have to pay for it. This is basically a rec fee. You can tell by this group that not a lot of people want to show up, so their rights don't, they don't even come to the annual membership meeting. Their rights is like little, but what they have to pay for is a rec fee. And if you're charging these two people 325 to go use the rec centers, and you're charging this one 650, that is not equal. I mean, equal is what equal is. There's no denying it, there's no special definition. Equal, in this case, means identical in mathematical and numerical value. There's no, there's no other thing. Yeah, you got a lawsuit, I got it. You're always going to win a lawsuit. You take our money, hire your lawyer to fight against us, I get it, you're always going to win that. But where's the, where's the moral compass in that? And how do you rectify those two things?
First off, sir, half the population of Sun City is not paying half the rate. Actually, it's a very small percentage. Now, give me, give me some time. First off, for the record, and every time I've addressed this, I have stated, for the record, I pay half the rate, because I purchased in 1998. The purpose of the change from per person to per property was the revenue stream for the operational funds to run Sun City. If you have it, don't shake your head, Jean, you know what I'm talking about, you know it's right. It was changed, the group is getting smaller every year. How do you rectify it? Two words, they die. You want to, you want to tell a 94-year-old lady on a meager social security check that her annual assessment, which she can barely afford the first place, is going to double? No, of course you don't. This will even out, even though I promised the financial, Kevin McCurdy, our financial person, I'm going to live forever just to pay half rate. That's why we have it. It is not half the population of Sun City. But now, the question of equality. One of the things is, Snowbird's running for office. Jean?
Dave, you've got to be concise, Dave.
Never mind. I defer.
There's two things also keep in, the assessment is, the first thing we have to look at with bylaws or articles of incorporation or anything else, is the statutes of the state of Arizona. If a judge makes a decision, that's a statute, that's a law of Arizona, and we have to follow that. There's no choice in that. And it's not a rec fee, it's a property assessment, it's assessed on the property. You could have 15 people in the house, it doesn't make any difference. It's still by, it's still by a property assessment, and that is the law of the state of Arizona, as decided by the courts, and we have to follow that. Sorry.
How do you still fix your bylaws?
Sir, next person this time. You can come back again if you want, but.
Richie Miller, 103368. Tom, do you only vote to break a tie? Mr. Foster, do you only vote on the board to break a tie?
Not on the board, in a committee.
That's correct. Line 1099, is a committee chair can only vote to break a tie. I believe very strongly that 103825 is in violation. You are in violation of it. Committees can't do that. They have to vote the same as the board, same process, same manner.
Well, Director Kice, do you recall the direction we received on that?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Does anybody else remember what we got in direction? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. We'd have to look at it.
There are two types of attorneys in my mind, those that help you get something done, and those that prevent you from getting something done. I'm not sure where yours lies right now, but you're spending too much money. Do some, do some of these judgments yourself. You're all thinking adults. Title 10 is not that long. It's not much longer than this set of bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. All right.
I'm going to speak to 220 in a second here. Is it Scott? Mr. Pearson, there's some of the nicer things that I'm called, so thank you. If you're, if I'm still alive in '29 when you run, I'll vote for you. Rick, with all due respect, if I wanted, as a Sun City historian, I've probably written more words than anybody I know regarding self-governance. If I wanted to have, not have self-governance, I had to move to Peoria, Surprise, or Glendale, where I had to voted for a mayor and a city council, and then just stayed at home. I moved to Sun City because self-governance is built into our Articles of Incorporation. It wasn't an afterthought, it was a forethought, and it was the reason Sun City was successful. You know that better than anybody. Let me get to 220. If I'm reading this correctly, it says, "The day pass gives the unqualified owner the privilege of using RCSC facilities, while temporarily 14 days or less per year in Sun City, Arizona. The unqualified owner is not allowed to bring guests." So if I bought a house at the age of 49, lived in Minnesota, I could only go to the rec centers 14 times a year? Is that what that says? I'm an unqualified owner, I'm underage.
I don't, I don't believe you go at all. You can own, but you cannot live here, and you would not have been given a rec card.
Interesting you say that, because I did buy when I was 49. I didn't get a rec card, I paid my fees, paid the PIF first year it was due, 750. But I got a yellow pass so that I could go to the rec centers, because they said, "Oh, look, he's paying for something." So just, we end up, we've created a setting here where home sales are down, they are across the country, don't know if it's a reflection on Sun City, but making this community as user-friendly as we can really benefits everybody that lives here, and I would hope that we don't do something that puts people in difficult positions. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So 220, that line's been in there in the bylaws for a while, what would you recommend instead?
I don't, I, so the clarification makes sense to me, and so I'm okay with that, but I thought it was interesting that when I bought here and I was an unqualified owner, they gave my wife and I both yellow cards. Now, it was a dollar a time, but we both got 20 punches to use.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 23?
I think we're past numbers now.
Yeah. No, go ahead, Jean.
I think we're past numbers. We'll just let people come up.
Jean Totten, 148753. Article 5, number, line 673. Oh, I didn't bring that up. I wanted to comment that you, your main focus, you've mentioned many, many times, is how you want to involve more members. You want to see them coming, you want your members to be interested. So then why do you say something like, if someone, that they only are allowed three minutes? And if someone is interested enough to sign up, show up, to speak, don't make it sound like, "Well, I guess our annual meeting's going to lost land, we're going to be here till midnight." We're going to be here till midnight because you're all going to be speaking so much." That's a good thing. You want member input. You don't want to make it sound like it's the wrong thing to do. Number two is a comment. Mr. C. brought up the business about a guest pass. I think, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I heard, when I was collecting petitions, that some of the members thought that it might be nice to give people who pay, who are single, and who feel like they're being, it's not equal, give them a pass once in a while, that they are allowed to bring someone. It's a small token of your appreciation of their fee, that in technicality, they are paying double. I also think that the comment that you made, Mr. Foster, you should either apologize or retract it. Who are you to determine the quality of the people who we decide we want to bring as guests? I have never heard that before. I think that's outrageous that you said that, just as I think it was wrong for you to speak about a member of the board who left. That's not your place. You did in the very beginning. And number three, if I'm understanding what you're saying about the membership meeting, you're allowing months from September until end of December for us to come up with our motions, and it's going here and there, and, but then, we're going to be at one annual, one meeting to discuss, we're going to get three minutes only to discuss. You said we need to sign up for every amended thing that might come up. So why do we go from three or four months of, what's the word I want, of preparation, and you guys are going to vote, and you're going to bring this to us, but you're going to, am I understanding this right? You're still going to allow us to talk at meetings on what amendments you might make or we might want to make, but only three minutes' worth? Tom, you're shaking your head like you know what I'm talking about.
Well, I'm sorry. You're, OK.
Oh, do you want me to try to stammer more?
No. No, thank you for your comments, Gene. OK, so I think there was some confusion there, that the issue that Ms. Evenson was raising was at the board meeting that is going to be held, where we look at each of these motions for the bylaws, article by article by article, that did that, and since I was informing you that if a board member made an amendment to one of those articles, that anyone who had, from membership, who had signed up to speak on a particular article that was then being amended, they would have the right to come up and speak to that amendment. Now, the time limit has, as you know, when you served on the board, and, I mean, there just has to be some reasonable amounts of time, of which these guys are going to ding me again for going past the reasonable amount of time. But you do need to have some control over how many or how long individuals speak. Filibusters are not necessarily productive for any of us. So I don't think an unreasonable time limit is inappropriate. So the intent for Ms. Evenson was, yep, you would theoretically need to sign up for every article just in case an amendment came up that you wanted to say something to. So that's how that would work. That does not mean in any other situation that you are not, you're still being given the opportunity to come up and speak at any other board meeting or exchange meeting as we've always done. I'm not clear as to your concern that you're not getting opportunity, because I believe you're getting a reasonable opportunity to do that, like every other member is being given. So not to upset my co-board members here, but I'll try to wrap that up.
The September through December is only for the annual meeting, and we'll be voting before the annual meeting, so there will not be discussion, vote has already occurred. But that's, the difference between what that, the September through December, is we're going to do the motions online, so everybody has a chance to do their comments there. Then we're voting before the March meeting, so.
And also, Gene, when you're talking about the treasury management report at the monthly board meeting, the intent is, if at all possible, to provide that answer there. However, there may be times when it's not. So we just wanted to put a time in so that if there's too much involved, that we could bring it back at a different time. But the intent still is to, if a person asks a question about the treasury report or management report, to answer it then, if at all possible.
Twenty-one people attend.
Yeah, sometimes more.
Right. Yes, Rusty?
I just wanted to let you know that I've been to many, many, many meetings in Sun City over the last 19 years, and I can tell you right now that if there wasn't a time limit to speak, people would stop coming to meetings. I have seen a lot of people walk out of meetings after an hour and a half because it just went too long. So a time limit, I don't believe, is unreasonable.
Thank you.
Jim, raise his hand.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
If you want to come and speak, and you know you're going to go more than three minutes, bring it in writing. Just say a few words about it, give it to us, and then we can look at it and give back to you and talk to it at the next board meeting. But if you need to talk for more than three minutes, it doesn't work really well in this context.
OK, Susan?
112650. Actually, Jim, this is one I came up to speak about, but Gene raises a very good point, and I thought about it before. There's a lot difference, there's a big difference in sending out something in the mail for people to read and look at and decipher than there is for someone that wants to raise a motion and speak to it and address questions. So I would beho, you know, it would behoove you to look at that because that is unfair. You put it in writing. You don't give them a chance to speak about it before it's being voted on. I know you can go back and forth dialogue you talked about with emailing the person that raised the motion that might be brought forth, but there's a reason that there is an election period so people can speak on their issues. And I think you need to consider that because you're not giving the members a voice only on paper. And so that addresses what you're talking about. I would use my full three minutes, and then I'll give you my paper, which I already do anyway.
Maybe what we need to do is have a comment period meetings before the annual meeting where people can address...
Exactly what I figured, is you might have a meeting ahead of time for those bringing motions to address the motions and have that dialogue before the voting. Might be a good idea. OK, but what I'm here for is, while we have tomorrow's meeting for LRP, and most of the time, we have a board quorum there, so I know you'll be able to influence us then, I'd like to understand your thoughts about my valid points that I brought up, you know, relative to, we can only address new projects five years out, five years and beyond. The other thing I want to bring up is, once everybody knows that I'm part of the master planning group, I'm the one that developed the scope. It's a very wide scope, and we haven't even had the discussions yet on how to narrow down to what we actually need. We're only looking at the wide paintbrush. So this 400,000 to 1 million, it could be way more than what we may need, because you guys hired a great golf director, so we may not need all the golf in there. And there are consultants that we interviewed that said they're willing to negotiate. They said it right in our meetings, but we haven't had those conversations. So I suggest we do that before putting the ax on the whole master plan idea. OK? That's all we're here for.
Director Gray?
Thank you. I just want everybody to be clear. We're not putting an ax on the master plan. You know, there's, we've had a lot on our plate. I mean, just the hours that we've put in, you've heard about for the bylaws committee. Sometimes, having the time, and again, it's the 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag. It takes a little time of process. So we have not disposed of the master plan. It's still, we're still considering it. It's just that we have, with all of these meetings, these bylaws, there's a sequence that we have to go through, and so it's, that's still in process.
OK, could you clarify that? Because all we keep hearing is, "It's going to be 400,000 to 1 million. Do we have the money?" "We have money for attorneys," is what I'm hearing other people say. And so that's the position.
Your message is clear. Thank you.
Well, and if I can just add too, the money that we spent on the bylaws attorneys is insignificant compared to what it's going to cost us for the master plan.
We're not here to discuss the master plan.
Yeah, let's move on from that.
Steve Collins, 166871. Well, I'm going to get to something that's important here.
OK.
Next Monday, 9 o'clock, right here at the Sundial, is the COC president's meeting.
Is this bylaw-related?
Yeah, it will be.
That sounds like board policy.
No, no, they'll be here, and they will discuss what bylaws they don't like, anything they don't like. We went one meeting a year, and they wanted two meetings a year because they like how it goes. We have, we will probably have triple the audience of any board meeting there, you know? So this is, people don't want to get involved, people don't listen. That's not always true. This is one example where the people are getting involved, and they are coming forward with their suggestions that then we can, Janet and I, can bring to the board. Thank you.
Right. All right. Have we exhausted or not? No, we have not. Do you have anything to add that's new, sir? Or is it a rehash of your last two comments? It's a rehash?
Can it be? Because you still haven't answered the question. I thought, that's what we're supposed to do, is bring questions. Are we supposed to bring questions to a bylaw committee? You guys are working on the bylaws, correct? And you have a bylaw that violates your articles. How are you going to fix it?
OK, so let's respond exactly to that question. Right, so Director Ruff has engaged legal counsel in the past on that exact question.
We talked about it.
OK, so why are you raising this when you know that the legal counsel told him that it was not a violation of the word equality?
How could it not be?
Because the law says it's not.
Really?
Just because you've defined it does not mean, do you have a law degree, sir?
I already defined it. You guys know what equal means. Everybody up there knows what the word equal means, right? You've still got a bylaw that's not matching your articles. That's all I'm saying to you. I know you've got a lawsuit and all that kind of stuff, but we didn't vote for a lawyer or a law. We voted for people that look at the thing and try and figure out, equal is equal, guys. Come on. Just because some lawyer said it someplace doesn't make it so. Your lawyer's going to, he told me personally, your lawyer's going to do whatever you want him to do and say whatever you want him to say. He works for you guys. He don't work for us.
Absolutely not true.
That is not true.
Well, that's what your board member told me.
Well, that is not true.
So...
I'm sorry we're having an argument about this in public. That's unfortunate.
Yeah.
But I do not see, as Director Gray has mentioned earlier, there's a fiduciary responsibility for those members of the board. Following legal advice is part of that fiduciary responsibility.
Sir, you've made your point very eloquently, and we've answered it to the best of our ability. I'm sorry that you don't see that our answer is accurate, but I think you've made your point on this.
Tom Aron, 100825.
This will be real quick, and it's an FYI. I know the bylaws supersede Robert's rules, but Robert's rules will tell you that in committee meetings, standing committees and special meetings function under the rules for small boards, which means that the chair can vote, the chair can participate in debate, and do all the things such like that. And the other fallacy is that the chair doesn't just vote to break a tie, a chair can vote to create a tie so that a motion fails. So...
Tom, I'm completely in sync with you, and when I originally brought up the thought of whether a chair can vote or not, I went into Robert's rules, and whether a chair can vote or not depends on the size of the committee. And I think it's that the level is 12. If it's less than 12 people, they can vote. If it's more than 12, they can't. Let me finish, please. But that's Robert's rules, and I wanted to put that forward. However, the working group decided that wasn't the best way. Yeah, Robert's rule said there are three different ways you can, that a chair can create a tie, break a tie, and things like that. But the working group decided to make it nice and clean-cut and just say no unless there's a tie.
Like I said, it's the bylaws supersede.
Yep.
Good.
So I tried Robert's on that, but I got voted down.
Director Gray?
Yeah, I just want to add that that decision was made, as he said, by the working group. It was to defer, to strengthen the committee, to make sure that it's the committee members that have that extra edge and not the chair or the vice chair.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who has?
Mary.
Mary?
Yeah.
Did you wish to speak?
Yes, I do.
Mary Dolman Schaber, 128442. Just a couple of comments. Is LRP directly connected to the bylaws?
The responsibilities for each committee is detailed in the bylaws, yes.
OK. There seems to be a lot of time spent on LRP for some reason, and I won't even go into what I'm thinking. The three minutes, I believe, to be adequate, because if there is a motion that you are interested in, if you are really interested in it, you want to be heard. Write it down, get it ready, and then come on up to the mic. But you should be able to present it in three minutes without going on for 20 or 25 or whatever. And maybe because I've been in business too long. But three minutes ought to be adequate to get your point across and then leave it. To the board, bravo. You guys have, to the bylaw, the committee, whatever we're calling it, to the committee, you guys have done an outstanding job. It's not done yet. We all know that. But you've done an outstanding job to go through this. I was to be a member of the group, and due to family wellness concerns, I wasn't able to do that this year. But I thank you, thank you all for hanging in there and discussing and doing what is best for Sun City. What would it take to take that paragraph, this is about assessment fees, would you be able to take that paragraph about assessment fees with the half, with the, you know, some people pay half, and some people do this, and then we find out, due to a court case, everybody pays by number of properties? What would it take to get that piece taken out of the bylaws? That it doesn't mention the half at all? Because that's old. Because that's old. We don't do it that way anymore. Called progress.
You mean just to keep it as property and take the?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because it's a question that's already been answered. And for new people coming in, it's going to be a question every single time. Why, why does one person have to pay the 650 when two are paying the 650? It's already been asked and answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Lori Ellingson, thirteen, thirty-three, thirty-five. I saw excellent movie here at Mountain View. On the basis of sex, a true story written about Ruth Bader Ginsburg. She fought for equality. In her 1972 lawsuit where she was defending a single Denver caretaker, she won not because of the law, but because of three words, radical social change. There's no reason why you, as a board, as a working group, cannot adhere to radical social change. There's no reason why you have to go to a lawyer and ask for his percep, her, his view. In the very, very beginning, Director Kice, you said the people that brought a motion forward at the last member meeting were not allowed to be on the working group because of perception. My perception is different than your perception. That's not a good reason. There's a reason when you go to a court case, they bring in expert witnesses. Those are people that are knowledgeable, those are people that are educated, those are people that have the expertise. The people that took the time to make, that made a motion researched, and they spent hours and hours. They rearranged their schedule so they could be at the meeting. They were not allowed to be heard. We talk about equality, and there's no reason why you can't make changes because of radical social change. My grandfather was born when Abraham Lincoln was the President of the United States. Abraham Lincoln made radical social change by declaring abolishing slavery. What kind of legacy do you want to leave to your grandchildren? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lori, is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
About bylaws.
About bylaws. Anita?
My number is one, three, six, three, one, two. Anita Borowski, and in full disclosure, I am a board member. I was hoping Bill would still be here when he addressed the issues of the board and no one running for the board and why he feels the board is not effective. And I'm not running for the board, and I'll tell you why. I have health issues. I've lost, as of now, seven family members in the last year and a half, including my husband and my son. I'm of an age where I can't work 40 to 60 hours anymore. I can't be a fully effective board member. I could probably do part of it, but not all of it. It was brought up where it was not appropriate to mention that Connie resigned for reasons. I was this close to resigning that same day. Being on this board, you're accused of having a personal agenda. You're, my, my education's been questioned, my abilities have been questioned, my experience has been questioned. I've been called names, I've been told I'm stupid. I've been told I don't care about the members. I've given up my clubs. I've had 33 appointments in September in one month. I don't have a personal agenda, I'm here for the members. And I take great offense to be told that I'm not effective. Moving on, comprehensive plan. We, I sat in these meetings, and we were told to look for a comprehensive master plan, which is exactly what we did, and we were told it would be 400,000 to 1 million. We were also told they last five to seven years, and they have to be reviewed. If you want something other than a comprehensive plan, we have not made a decision yet, and I'm offended that you think we have. It's still to be discussed. There was also a comment made where, I know you're going to pass these bylaws, so I'm not sure why we're talking about them. I don't know what bylaws are, are yet, we're still revising them. Don't tell me what I'm voting for. And as far as the bylaw committee, thank you. I understand what a job this was. I stayed so far away from the bylaws committee, it was ridiculous. I wanted nothing to do with it, I didn't want to know who was on it, I really didn't care. I knew Dave was on it, and that I've known for a few weeks. I found out Rusty was on it last week. I was in another meeting with him, and he said, I have to leave because I have to go to the bylaws meeting. That's how I found out Rusty was on. I've never seen Carmel in my life, I don't think. I saw Scott one day in the home, but I had no idea what you were doing roaming around here. So thank you all, you've done a great job, and I appreciate every bit of it. And I'm sorry I can't be a board member, but I would love to be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Your service will, is greatly appreciated, and, and you hold your head up high. You've been an outstanding member of this board and this community for many, many years. Thank you.
And we will miss you, we will miss you.
All right. Anyone else wishes to speak? So we will have another town hall on Wednesday evening, so if you didn't get to speak, certainly come there. The 29th will be the board meeting that we've talked about here, where we start to go through these bylaws with the objective of voting on as many of the articles as we can. The next monthly board meeting will be the following day, October 30th, and there are a number of things on that agenda. The next exchange meeting is November 10th here at 9:00 AM, and the annual meeting is still tentatively scheduled for March 10th of 2026 at 6:00 PM in this room. All right, hearing no further business, I declare this meeting as adjourned. Thank you for your attendance and participation.
Thank you very much.
This is a copywritten production of the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated and is intended for the sole purpose of informing our recreation center members. Any duplication, copying, transmission, broadcast, or use including electronic and social media is strictly prohibited without the prior written consent from the Recreation Centers of Sun City Incorporated. Thank you for watching.